And then your chart would basically be the list then of uses with a separate column for the numbers.
Okay.
Shall we consider Paul's suggestion, however, to make microbusinesses not in the residential area because I think that's a really good idea.
Consensus on board. Microbusiness is an SP in the residential area. You want to take that out?
I think it was also proposed as SP in the NT 6A district, which is... Just want to go back to that chart.
Sure.
This was my mistake.
Microbusiness.
The chart that's going to come up on the screen here now is different than the one on your hard copy. The discussions between the craft cooperative had proposed...
I'm just trying to make it a little smaller so you can see it on the screen.
Had proposed some of these uses also in the NT 6, which is not reflected on your paper copy right there, but is reflected on the screen.
And what are those? I can't read that.
So in the NT 6, what had been proposed was marijuana cultivator, marijuana product manufacturer, independent testing laboratory, marijuana research facility, marijuana microbusiness, and marijuana craft cooperative, all by special permit in NT 6?
Do you know exactly what NT 6 is?
It is from the center of North Turo on either side of Shore Road all the way down to this beach port district.
Oh, some grocer's square all the way to...
Yeah.
Oh, my God.
And if the board wants...
People live there.
Yeah. If the board wants, what I'm going to do is do the same thing that I've done for North Turo Center and Turo Center and Route 6 General Business District. I'll pick out all of the owners, what size lots they're on.
That's great.
And we haven't even gotten to discussing this yet.
Is that completed for now?
Do we remove microbusiness?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, the title of it is red, N.
Well, if we remove microbusiness from the residential district and leave it only on Route 6, then we're not going to see 5,000 square feet of hoop houses showing up anywhere in town.
Yeah. I'm not sure how to distinguish the microbusiness from the co-op because the co-op also lots of production. And the microbusiness is a small group of the co-op.
Yes, but it's an individual and we're talking about on any lot in town.
But the co-op, the point is the co-op is essentially could do the same thing. Any...
They could do the same thing except there's a layer of law within the state statutes that says that they have, there has to be at least one farmer already submitting, you know, has been farming here as part of the co-op. This would say that an individual person can simply go and it would be a real lottery if they get them, if they apply for a microbusiness license on their property and we don't even have lot size here. It'd cover most of their, the property around their house and someone will do this with hoop houses in order to make money. And, you know, unless we have very stringent special permit rules in some way for the...
Somehow I feel this is what needs, but it's okay.
Well, we're cutting the lawn.
Yeah.
Special permit rules are the most important thing, the most important issue. Give us control.
That's what we're working on. Come on, take it out from the north there and then here. I didn't get anybody's feedback after.
Well, I proposed a stay. I mean, a small farmer might want to have a microbusiness.
Microbusiness out of the residential.
Okay, and you say stay.
I said stay.
You said small. And you...
What? I don't know.
You said...
Well... Say you know or you don't know.
I don't know. And, you know, I'm just bringing it up before the board to see what other input there is. I mean, we had someone say absolute yes and someone say no, that's not a good idea.
Okay, and you brought it up and we're just doing consensus right now and so, you know, so then you're not voting.
I'm on yes.
Jack, you want to make it a no in the residential district, microbusiness? So we've given up on the idea that we don't, that through the special permit procedure... I didn't give up on it. We're just trying to get a consensus of the board. This was brought up by Paul and I can't be stuck on it for the next 20 minutes because we're not going to have enough time to get through this Bible. Oh, I'm, I'm willing to eliminate from the residential. And Bruce?
You're willing to eliminate it yet?
Change to an N. That's what he says. Don't do anything yet. Just...
And Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I think that the caveat here is what do we come up with in special permitting criteria?
Absolutely.
That will, you know, if we can put enough criteria in, if somebody's got four acres and they can put such a thing in the center of their property to where it's not seen by anyone, well, then I don't see the reason why we should eliminate it completely.
Well, you brought it up, Paul.
I didn't.
That's... I don't want to have more discussion on it. I want to follow along.
By special permitting.
The special permitting procedures on a microbusiness could be very restrictive. That you just, I mean, maybe because there are all these items that are included, that was special permitting to say, this is what you're going to do. You're a microbusiness. You're not every business that has the things. So, I mean, we have that reset at the very end.
So when we go down to the second part of the microbusiness, right?
Craft cooperative. Okay?
Two.
I got, I'm going to tell you what to say. Wants it to be R, wants it to be SP, N, no, this is, no, I'm sorry, N, SP, zero.
SP.
I'm sorry. SP? SP and N. So we get an SP for that.
Okay.
Wait, you were just pulling this for the microbusiness? That's correct. I just want to get a letter in that box so I can move on.
That's fine. Residential.
Residential, microbusiness. It's a special permit. You see, the wording in, in the... I'll go through the whole thing again. I'll just get myself all confused. Special permit is just a latitude. So we're on the last thing, craft cooperative. It says like that and you added an SP in the North Turo 6A, right?
Yes.
Microbusiness has also got SPs? Right?
Yes, yep, yep. NT 6A, TC and MTC.
So the confusion there would be, you mean you're allowing five of them?
Correct.
And the truth is no, that would be one permitted license. It could happen in any of these five businesses. Peter, do you know where we are in this?
I think we're on four.
Good.
Hours of operation. Should I read it?
Sure.
"Hours of operation for recreational marijuana retailers and medical marijuana treatment centers shall not exceed the Alcohol Beverage Control Commission. Maximum hours of operations for liquor licenses not to be drunk on the premises pursuant to mass general law 138, section 15, but may be limited by conditions of the special permit."
Sounds good, Mr. Chairman.
Keep it. No one's got anything else to say, right?
Number five?
Yes.
"RMEs are commercial uses and shall be located in standalone structures not connected to any other building or use."
Is there a problem with that?
Yes. If you look at the spreadsheet, the five things handed out, you'll see that every single property here, except for one which is under agreement, already has a structure or a use sign. And therefore, this particular number five, our commercial uses, we'll forget about it, shall be located in standalone structures and not connected to any other building or use. We literally, this is, I think Katie called it exclusionary zoning.
Effective prohibition.
Pardon?
Effective prohibition.
Effective, thank you Katie. It's effective prohibition. We are telling people they can only be in Turo Center, North Turo Center, or on Route 6, General Business District, and no one can meet that part of the Bible.
You have a fix or not?
No.
Delete it.
Yeah, if you take it out.
Please.
Take that whole statement out. Five.
Did you discuss, did you agree on the number of...
Point of order, Mr. Chairman. Are we allowed to be speaking in this? So please, no speaking.
I get it, Tim. I understand. I'm tired now.
Me too. But I appreciate what you're doing.
Katie, can you explain to me why if this is deleted, that doesn't still make it prohibitive to leave that property?
Right now it says our commercial uses shall be located in standalone structures not connected to any other building or use. The craft cooperative would like to be able to do some processing in residential homes. I'm just looking across at their draft here. Katie proposed in their, in the collaborative draft to take this language out entirely, so I don't see significant issues with the town in the residential number.
Delete. General requirements.
Senator? "No RME or MMTC shall be located within 500 feet as measured from each lot line of the subject block of the following creatures' uses: public or private schools providing education in grades K through 12, educational home, childcare center, public park, playground, indoor or outdoor recreation area for children, children's camp, a public library, and existing place of worship such as a church, temple, mosque, or synagogue."
Yeah, Paul.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, yeah, it is, Paul, sir?
Yes, it is.
Okay, you don't have to build it on this, because I get it.
The, the state requires nothing within 500 feet of a school unless the town votes to lessen that 500 feet. The, what the school provision, which is in the state law, it eliminates 19 of the 58 lots which are in the Turo General Business District on Route 6. The other things that are included here, the...
Child care.
Childcare center, there's no definition for that. Public park eliminates North Turo, Turo Center completely. Playground is hard to define. Indoor or outdoor recreation area, it, for children, is hard to define. Children's camp is another thing. Public library eliminates everything on the province town side of North Turo Center. An existing place of worship such as a church, a temple, a mosque, a synagogue. That would have to be defined because there are some friendly bathing houses which takes place in private homes and there are some zen temples which are in bylaws too. So, you know, I don't know quite how we deal with that.
Any suggestions?
So I'll tell you where this, this requirement sort of has its genesis and that is under the medical marijuana regulatory scheme, there was a default buffer zone applied by the Department of Public Health in any community that did not set its own specific buffer and that buffer included daycares, schools, and places where children commonly congregate. So that idea of providing a buffer to those types of sensitive uses came really from the medical contacts. When the state broke the, amended the recreational adult use law, they took out those other uses, the daycares and the places where children commonly congregate and really only included a specific requirement with respect to schools K through 12. Communities, some communities who already had medical zoning chose to make their bylaws consistent with the buffers that they had already put in place based on DPH's default buffer. And so these have sort of found their way into a number of communities bylaws. There's no requirement that you have a buffer that's this restrictive and certainly the AGs approving them, but you could reduce the types of uses. The other consideration is right now, I think it says any, any type of RME. No RME or MMTC. You're probably more concerned about having a buffer with respect to retail uses. You don't really necessarily, you're not going to care as much if, you know, somebody's within 500 feet of a school if they're doing, you know, research.
Open fields.
Well, an open field is going to be fully secured under the state regulations, so one, one possible consideration, if you care about these as sensitive uses within the community, number one, you can limit, you can reduce that list. You can keep it at, you know, daycares and schools and eliminate some of these other more ambiguous terms. If there are sensitive uses beyond schools that you want to include on this list, you could consider making this requirement specific to marijuana retailers and the MMTCs that do distribution, that do dispensing and not apply the same buffer necessarily to other types of marijuana uses.
Can we make a specific exception for marijuana retailers to allow them someplace in otherwise, because we want retailers?
Well, by, by reducing the buffers, you increase or eliminating buffers, you increase the types of uses. It might not totally take the school out of it. That's really, I mean, that was sort of built into the state law. But you could, you could limit your buffer to just K through 12 of education, make it 500 feet or less and have it applied to retail establishments. That would be sort of the least restrictive possibility.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
We dealt with number five. I would like to revisit that just for a second. It says RMEs are commercial uses and shall be located in standalone structures. I would like to change that and say RMEs shall be... Pardon?
Were you removed?
I know, but I don't know whether that's in the best interest of the town. I would like to say RMEs shall be located in standalone structures, period. And what that does is right now our biggest concentration of traffic and traffic problems are in the groups of stores that are in the center of the different districts and along Route 6. If it is an isolated store, it will not have the same traffic problems that would be there. For example, in Turo Center, there is a store that's owned by the Castle Hill right on the corner there, which has a big parking area, has no other things there. They do have an apartment upstairs, two bedroom apartment. But that would be something that if there were a lot of people going in and out of it, it has already had three businesses on the property and did not prove a traffic law. Right across the street is the old Wilder School, which has a residence upstairs and two little places downstairs. That too has a parking area that would be sufficient. They're made very well. North Turo is a little bit more problematic, but in both cases, there are very little in the way of neighbors to complain, literally. So by leaving part of that number five in, RMEs shall be located in standalone structures, we move them away from what is already a concentrated traffic problem. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, just a question about that. Would removing this or revising this mean that the co-op couldn't use their parts of their residences for their manufacturing or processing?
So if I understand Mr. Kirin's concern, perhaps one way to address this would instead of making it global to RMEs, make it specific to marijuana retailers. Marijuana retailers shall be located in standalone structures.
So if that's not RME, that would be...
It would be marijuana retailer.
Thank you.
Which is part of the confusion. The RMEs to increase. Jessica, about that?
I do think.
Yeah, I asked.
But are we deleting this first and then still?
They were just, number five should now say marijuana retailers shall be located in standalone.
Didn't Mr. Kirin find that that means there's no place where a marijuana retailer can be?
With all of the other things, the daycare centers and that, that's the part of the effective prohibition.
Okay.
But if we eliminate all of the extremist things there, then we have the possibility of it being some places in areas that will not be adding to the confusion on Route 6 in the summer and...
Oh, believe me, we're going to add to confusion for some reason. I'm confident. Where are we up to?
We're back to general requirements.
General requirements.
Of course, we'll be setting the buffer.
Yep.
That would be what, number two?
Number one.
No, we're still on one.
Whether or not you want to reduce that buffer as to the types of uses. And whether or not you want to make the buffer specific to all marijuana establishments or some other subset.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask our town attorney another question? Is this best handled in the special permit requirements for each one of the things here or should this be part of this general requirements section?
In terms of a buffer from some other sensitive land uses?
No, not the buffer specifically, but the standalone, standalone structured comment.
As of right now, we don't have, we have an application permit requirement section and then we have additional provisions regarding cultivation and this is a retail specific provision. So maybe we'll leave it here for now and see if it fits somewhere else when we get further in the draft. It could go into the general requirements section, but it could be moved down along the buffers.
You want to just eliminate everything except the school?
So you're going to eliminate everything except the school. I mean, that's really what the state imposes anyway. You would only need a bylaw provision if you wanted to reduce it below 500 feet or if we wanted to increase the types of uses to which that buffer applies. So if you're just going to do 500 feet from schools, it's not necessary to include it in your bylaw in order to have it be an applicable regulation because it would be a regulation to state anyway.
It not being necessary. I think that it would be advantageous so that people knew that the school is protected in passing to the bylaw.
Eliminate the language except the school. Which may be redundant in state language, but at least it provides some protection. Number two.
Works for me. Should I read it?
Please do.
"The 500 foot buffer distance under this section shall be measured in a straight line from the nearest point of the property line requested to the nearest point of the property line where the RME or MMTC will be located."
No problem.
That's a reflection also of the state law. That's how the state calculates that decision.
"Number three, applicants for an RME or MMTC shall provide, here, the licensing agent's approved removed and security plan approved by the commission to the police chief, fire chief, health agent, and building commissioner prior to granting a special permit."
All good?
"An approved host community agreement shall be required prior to granting a special permit for an RME or MMTC." Should we include retail? Oh, retail is, retail is included.
Talking of it.
Okay. But what about, okay, I'm sorry. So I move on?
Yes.
One question.
What do you have a question?
Katie, should we put after the word agreement in parentheses and ask if we have two agreements that are necessary to fulfill a license?
You mean such as the person growing in wealthly?
Correct.
You can't regulate the person growing in wealthly.
We can't regulate them, but we can...
Whether they have an agreement with wealthly.
We just want to know if it met the requirement for agreement, if they held the outreach thing and that they are...
In wealthly.
In wealthly.
That's outside your purview.
Well, for example, what if, what if we have a host community agreement here and the grower in wealthly does not?
Then they can't grow in wealthly. That location won't.
Does that affect our permitting?
So we just do our thing in wealthly as it's...
They're going to, any cooperative that has locations in multiple communities is going to be required to comply with the zoning applicable in the community in which they want to locate and that host community agreement requirement within that community.
Are we on four? Should I move on, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
"An approved host..." Did I already read this?
Yes.
Yes.
"No other from marijuana cultivation, processing, manufacturing, or retail may be noxious because of nuisance or a danger to public health or impair public comfort and convenience."
or impair public comfort and convenience. Marijuana establishments shall incorporate odor control technology and safeguards to ensure that emissions do not violate the Board of Health regulations adopted pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 111, Section 31(c), including but not limited to these to those specified for odors.
So I have a comment in here because there was some language.
I noticed this comment, that came out. This is a, I think this draft is not the latest draft that the Co-op had proposed. So they compromised on it. And if the odor is deemed to be a nuisance, they will address it.
Katie, is this purely a judgment call?
On who determines what the odor is?
Yeah.
This is going to be the tricky thing for determining. I mean, if you're talking sound, there's a way to go out and measure decimal levels. You know, if you're talking air pollution, there's ways to measure that.
And this is so subjective.
Odor is going to be a more subjective thing and it's going to, it's going to be more difficult to determine whether or not something rises to the level of the nuisance. But in addition to what's in the zoning bylaw with respect to this, there is the added protection of the Board of Health being able to control nuisances. And so there's sort of a double bubble of regulation on the odor side in terms of enforceability.
Was this intended to be ruled, the section was called?
No.
That was just a comment.
That was a comment that there had been a proposal with respect to outdoor cooperations, but it sounds like that has been resolved and this language is acceptable to the cooperative.
Shall I move on?
Sure.
All business signage, marketing, advertising, and branding shall be subject to the requirements promulgated by the Cannabis Control Commission and the requirements of the Truro zoning bylaw and sign code. In case of a conflict, a more restrictive requirement shall apply. In the case of signage, I don't think anybody wants to say that, you know, this is where a marijuana transporter lives. You know, if you guys break into a vehicle, this is the house to break into. Can we eliminate signage from those businesses that are not supposed by state statute to have any contact with the public?
There's some very strict regulations on signage in the state regulations with respect to what can be displayed and how things can be marketed and advertised. Once we go into sign territory, we get a little bit into dicey territory with respect to First Amendment and whether or not you're regulating commercial uses equally. So the safest legal approach here is to just apply your existing sign code across the board to any commercial enterprise. And then the Cannabis Control Commission has imposed some fairly stringent regulations on top of that with respect to what the signage can look like.
Okay, and as part of the businesses that are not to have contact with the general public, can we make that requirement within a special permit? For example, everyone has to have a house number. You know, 10 Smith Street, that's for 9.1. But we don't have to say 10 Smith Street, he bakes brownies here.
I think it's part of the site plan review and special permitting and ask for information about what the signage will look like and have some input as to how that is displayed. So I think that's certainly an area that could be addressed.
You have to have a signage one. Isn't that one of those things that people are going to know what it is if it was identified or not?
Shall I move on?
Yes.
The hours of operation of the RME and MNTC shall be set by the special permit granting authority as a condition of the special permit.
So this, we can switch just the planning board since we've designated who the special permit granting authority is. Now, I would just note that there is already an hours provision that the board reviewed back.
To the retailer.
With respect to the...
It's number four, under applicability of regulations.
Yeah.
Or it might not be number four anymore, but...
So there was a retailer-specific provision that basically said they shall not exceed. And that sort of gives you your upper limit. But this provision gives you the ability to set the hours of operation for any type of establishment. I think there's a conflict with the other hours of operation provision. That just provides your other hours. If you wanted to reduce those as a condition of the special permit, you certainly could.
Shall I move on?
Yeah, sure.
All licensed marijuana establishments shall not be located inside a movable structure or mobile vehicle such as a trailer van or truck unless operating as a licensed marijuana transporter.
So this is where the board would need to address the question of movable structures.
I can actually read the latest draft proposal about structures that we don't have. It says, "No RME marijuana cultivator, MNTC, D.R., I'm not going to reveal those, but no RME should be located inside a movable structure or mobile vehicle such as a trailer van or truck unless operating as a licensed marijuana transporter. Craft marijuana cultivator cooperatives shall be allowed to utilize movable structures, provided however natural screening shall be required as a condition of the special permit or site plan review approval as necessary to render such structures less visible from public or private ways and flooding properties. The number of movable structures utilized by craft marijuana cultivator cooperatives may also be limited as a condition of the special permit to no more than three." They're now asking for three per parcel for tier-two cultivators. Additional containers may be allowed for higher tier of cultivators if approved by the planning board in connection with the site plan review process described in Section 4, Paragraph 4 of the bylaw. And just parenthetically, we haven't gotten to this or discussed this yet, but the Co-op has proposed that their initial license would be no more than a tier-two license. And if they applied for a greater license in a subsequent year, they would go completely through the process again of special permit and site plan review. But to the movable structure issue, they want to have three per parcel and they were proposing a maximum of six parcels.
It's three steel storage containers?
Yes.
I think you have to also consider that if you're allowing micro-business and marijuana cultivators as licensed categories, that the same requirement would be applicable to them. So you're not allowing craft cooperatives to have the containers, but other cultivators to be excluded from that.
Mr. Chairman, this sort of raises the general question, how much deterioration in the aesthetics of this town are we going to allow to no tax revenue? And how will we justify it to the people whose houses have one of these grow sites open next to them? They're very ugly. The grow sites are very ugly, look like industrial operations.
I live at home.
Really? Go on.
People call it home. I know, I just am losing it. I haven't got enough energy for this. So I think we have a single storage unit. Except we have...
The language in the draft right now says no movable structure. The proposal is to change that.
I think we should keep it.
Perfect to screening and limitations in the special permit.
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to make the board aware. Yeah, we have about 20 to 25 minutes and then we have to, we have to, you know...
Leave.
Leave because the board's like Minnesota at five and they need to set up. So we could continue to our next regularly scheduled here in his next Wednesday. We'd have to continue till then. But we have some time, so I'll give you guys time warnings.
I was speaking to, I was speaking to the container issue. The Co-op has asked for three. We initially discussed two. But there's language that they're willing to agree to to screen these plots or containers. And I think we should consider it on a case-by-case basis. For example, if you go to Pure Joy Farm, which is one of the sites that the Co-op has, it's very secluded. Anne's is long-known Meadows Farm. They're very secluded places you can put a portable building, a pot or a shipping container, and screen it. And so if it's adequately screened, in our opinion, and no one can see it, then I don't see why we should, again, deprive them of the ability to have something that helps them deal with their product. You know, we also talked at one time about a limit on how long a portable structure could be there. But I would point out, we have portable structures in various places in the residential district of Truro, which I don't find attractive, but those people can have them and they don't screen them. So again, I felt like the Co-op stepped up and agreed to some pretty restrictive language about screening and placement. And again, going back to site plan review, I don't think this board is going to allow a container to be placed somewhere that's going to offend the neighbors, be seen from the street. So I don't have the aversion to containers that I totally understand other people have.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
This is a new thing for everyone.
Words are at a premium, Paul. Words are at a premium.
Thank you. When a crop comes in, no matter what crop it is, generally has a tendency to come in all at once. And in the crop cannabis, if it gets moldy, you have to run it through a grinder and flush it away. So being able to dry it properly is very important to have some kind of income from it. Also, being able to keep it away from all the things that grow here is also a problem. So I'm going to guess that having never had a crop, that the craft cooperative won't really know exactly what is needed for here. And I would be willing to leave it to special permit, and I'll tell you why. If they need two, or if they need four, or need five, or six. I have walked up on a group of six containers that have camouflage netting over them and you didn't see them until you were about 40 feet away. So there are ways to screen and hide these things so that they are not a problem for the neighborhood. And I think what we can do is try to ask the people that want to put these in, ask them what they're going to do. And whereas if you're going to plant bushes around them and that's going to, there's a question of whether the bushes are going to grow or not. But if they're going to cover them with a camouflage netting, and they happen to be green to begin with, dull green, they're going to disappear. And I personally think that we should make it so these people succeed. And since they don't know what's going to work yet or not, make it part of the special permit. And, you know, even put a time limit on it. So, you know, run with this for two years and you have to come back with us and we'll find out what the neighborhood thinks about it and we'll deal with it. Thank you.
Problem with the special permit is that we don't need people coming back over and over again. They're not going to know what they need at the special permitting. So it seems like it may not be the most appropriate time. We might just want to try to blanket something here that seems reasonable at this time. And if something is needed more, then that might require. So we have language that we, that allow two?
We don't right now, but...
I thought we did.
We did at one point and we're not looking at that language, unfortunately. And then after that, the final request was three, up to three containers on a parcel.
I just looked at a 40 footer today. Two of them. I like the language. Number 10, right? I like the language.
The grease.
Is that what we got?
Yeah. The number of containers shall be limited by special permit.
Can you read that?
Yeah, I guess, no RME marijuana cultivator shall be located, I think I always say, shall be located inside a movable structure or mobile vehicle such as a trailer van or truck unless operating as a licensed marijuana transporter. Craft marijuana cultivator cooperatives shall be allowed to utilize movable structures, provided however natural screening shall be required as a condition of the special permit which site plan review approved as necessary to render such structures less visible from the public or private ways and flooding properties. The number of movable structures utilized by the craft marijuana cultivator cooperatives may also be limited as a condition of the special permit to no more than three per parcel for tier-two cultivators. Additional containers may be allowed for higher-tier cultivators if approved by the planning board in connection with... Site plan review process described in Section 4, Paragraph 4 of this bylaw.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
Why are we stuck here?
Well, can you see what Jack and Bruce think about it?
Yes, absolutely.
Number eight, Jack and Bruce, or Jack, Bruce. Jack, Bruce. Yeah, that's what it is. What is it? It is, it says right now, "All licensed marijuana establishments shall not be located inside a movable structure as a mobile vehicle such as a trailer van or truck unless operating as a licensed marijuana transporter." That doesn't supply good language for the situation.
I think the language that was quoted is legally fine. The only change I would suggest, if you were going to go with that language, is instead of just specifying craft marijuana cultivator, it should include micro-businesses and marijuana cultivators as well.
I didn't read them all.
Oh, okay.
I think it was in there, I just...
But we don't yet. We need to be able to... And then the only other question I had was tier-one, a tier-one cultivator. This specifies, you say up to tier-two. It's not just two-two. It would be tier-two or anything less. So if you were tier-one, you could have a structure.
But that has a limit of three.
Right, and it could be smaller if you have a lower tier. So these are fewer micro-businesses could be limited if they have...
I think initially we need to start with a two.
Yeah, let's do two. Let's not do three.
I think we need to start with a two.
Could you two with, I think, two is an initial threshold with the ability to increase pursuant to special permit and site plan review on a case-by-case basis?
So what you're saying is by right, they get two. So what you're saying is by right they give two and special permit, we can increase that? No, not by right, by special permit.
This is all within the context of the special permit?
It's just by right in the special permit, it's like.
He just means within the special permit.
Okay.
They're guaranteed two, basically, that's what you mean.
And if if the need should be greater, we could go there and we could put a time limit on it and if it doesn't work out. And and what this also means is if these businesses should fail, if they can't make a profit. We're not taking down a barn. We're not letting a derelict greenhouse, you know, exist on the property. These are things that can literally be picked up and moved and sold so they get their money back.
We're not going to make it.
Yeah, let's stop.
I'm going to continue this.
Okay. Can, um, would someone mind helping me go through that language? Do you want to do it now before we close for number eight?
Sure.
Are we going to vote on that language?
I can, no. You can give it to Jess now and then we can pick up there and review it when we start with the next.
I think it's too permissive.
Do we give it to you now or later?
Now is probably best, while we're still.
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, can we get a copy of what we've done so far?
Yeah, yeah, I can do that.
Yeah.
And I'm heading into.
Nobody in the jury.
Get that on there. We can tweak that to what I actually said.
Mr. Chairman? The availability of our attorney is limited, so we certainly do want to work on that on the next session. So maybe we could try and work something out.
Time wise, depending on next session for this?
When are you continuing this meeting?
Our next regular scheduled meeting is September, which is next Wednesday.
Whenever you're available.
I mean, we're not continuing the public hearing on this, the public hearings. We can just, we can talk dates and decide when this will go on the agenda again. I'm going to probably have to coordinate with Jess on.
Five is not good for you.
I can't do the fifth unless we did something first thing in the morning because I have a meeting in Charleston at seven o'clock that night.
I get it. I haven't got any suggestions.
How much time do you have? Well, we've we've we held the required hearing to place the by law on the.
Marijuana cultivator.
On the law. So now that's when the court goes into its own time. We have to get that line, I mean, you'd go to the select board before that.
Yes.
It depends on how this is posted on the warrant. If it's posted on the warrant with the whole text of the by law, or it could be posted more generally with the full text of the by law provided to town meeting on today.
And when we solidify the language, we can hold another hearing because we've already met the requirements for this hearing. Another hearing to let the town look at this and review it both on whether or not.
Yeah. It's not necessarily required. Maybe another public hearing, I mean, that's, you know, this is deviated so substantially from from where you started.
We should definitely do it.
But we've been deviated.
I'm listening here what people think of our, we've worked.
We're just trying to get the language on the complete. Mr. Chairman, there are some general rules that apply to what we're doing there and have we broken all of them yet? It's high and high. I can read what we need to be concerned about, you know, changes for changing the identity or substantial character of the original zoning proposal, which we're not. While we fundamentally depart from the original proposal, we're not. Is it rad, are we radically different from the original proposal? We're not one of those.
We're heading to.
No, we are just becoming more specific.
We we also notified a very general planning board hearing with respect to this by law in terms of the scope.
In connection with the site.
With the idea that there would be changes to this, so the scope of that hearing notice was particularly.
I think all, I don't know, having easy access to the draft is very sad when people can't find it and I couldn't find it either. It's just not an easy search on the town's website. There's a current and quite important papers. Room to improve it there. Thank you. So we can't recommend this to the selectmen. We can only say that we're going to continue this at our next scheduled meeting, which is September 5th.
At six o'clock here.
Is there anything you need to add to this meeting at this point? Is there anything else on the agenda on the 5th?
We have a preliminary subdivision plan application. And that's it. And that's actually time sensitive, so we have to have it on the.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I don't think our attorney could come to that. Well, we we could have a a second meeting early in the morning where our attorney could could attend and then we could again have the regular meeting. All we have to do is advertise.
So you have to drive to Arizona in the evening. I wasn't clear on it. You have to have restrictions, I got it.
I I need to be in Charleston by seven o'clock that evening.
And how far is Toronto?
It's pretty sort of central mass.
Half a day away from LA.
Yeah, I don't know if it's appropriate. Where are you going in front of the front place?
Walton.
See, that wouldn't really feel.
Well, can we pick a special day and then she can, they'd work.
I'm not going to do that.
When do we have to have this to the select board?
We're going to find that out tonight. We're going to find that out tonight, Karen.
Should we have a special meeting on the 6th, if that's available, Thursday?
Is that a better day?
Um, I I do have another evening commitment, so a morning time I would be able to do, but not not.
And how early would you like to be here?
Well, I could be here by nine. I could be here later if you want to not be here tonight.
Mr. Chairman, are you back on the 6th?
Say what?
Are you back on the 6th?
I'm back on the 5th.
Okay.
Morning. Yeah, Thursday, you're on the 6th.
This is assuming this room is available, so I'll check on that tonight.
It might be better to choose 10 a.m., but. And Walton, you gotta be.
Probably 30.
Because you're likely 28.
Schools are open. Okay.
I will tentatively put this in for the 6th and you can let me know time.
Do you need a motion for this? Six at nine o'clock.
Motion to continue? Yes, yes, please.
So. Do a time share.
That would be Thursday, September 6th, 10 a.m. If there are any rooms available, we continue this. Thank you, all. Anybody want to say yes to that? I don't know. Sorry. Need a second?
Second.
Good. All those in favor?
Aye.
That's it, so should we just have a motion to adjourn?
Please. No?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you for your patience for that occasion.
Thank you.
We'll get there.